Numbers, you read the, you know, long answer.
Comments.
Comments. You get a very different perspective. And so I think there is great value to making sure every member of the board has some, some review aspect to this, even though they may not be accountable in terms of carrying out something or doing something about it.
So are you saying?
And actually, if I could just close by saying, ultimately, one of the goals is to, the administration is going to do their readout on, on the report, kind of our collective responsibilities, make sure there aren't gaps in that readout, right? Are they ignoring something that needs to be attended to? I'm sorry, Ken.
No, so I, I guess I was thinking that we do have a responsibility, each of us, to take a look at the entire body of feedback that we're getting. And I, I certainly would, just because I'm not, you know, on the governance committee, I certainly would be looking at student climate and staff leadership relationships. I think we all ought to be looking at all these. I guess I was thinking that these checks we're talking about, sort of the processing of that and the deeper dive into that, which would result in a, an interpretation that would be brought in front of the entire board for their consideration, along with recommendations as necessary, so that, you know, the school climate would go to the governance, but governance wouldn't just keep it to themselves, but they would be looking at it, what does this mean? How are we interpreting this? What, what actions is the school taking? Is that adequate? Are there gaps in that? Bringing that then before the entire board, to the board's consideration. So, I guess again, I was.
So, so that's, I think that brings up a fundamental question. Our assumption, based on what we shared last meeting, was that the administration ultimately is going to own what the, you know, the survey. And they're going to take the feedback of the survey and have a plan of what they may or may not want to do about it. And we as a board need to make sure that's really in alignment with what the survey is actually saying. So, the, the assumption is that the board is not going to come, or the committees are not going to come and necessarily make recommendations. They may make recommendations if, as a response to what the administration may propose and say, well, you know, Dr. McCleary, we, we agree with you here, here, and here, but we think you might be having a gap in this area.
And that's, that's where I was headed. It was very much in line with what you just said. And again, because of that sort of important but minimalist role that the, the committees would be playing, I think, you know, the fact that there are two, four, six, seven checks there is sort of immaterial.
Yep.
I think there are two things that are getting mixed up. One is the idea of ensuring that everybody on the board is being responsible and is looking at it and having some ownership. That could happen separately from a committee, right? I mean, we could just assign pairs of people to look at different groups. I mean, we've done that with other things, right? And then, because we have to talk about it as a full board anyway. So that's, so that's another alternative, rather than necessarily putting it on specific committees that don't necessarily fit. The flip side of that, the other thought that I had with this is that, I think that the other piece that we haven't done is we haven't actually really discussed it because nobody kind of owned it. And so if it actually gets discussed at a committee level in detail, right, then we're doing our diligence of, we're looking at the, the data and process of it. But we should be doing it at the board level anyway. So I guess the question doesn't have to, does it always have to happen in a committee?
I, I would disagree. And I mean, clearly articulate why I disagree that it has to happen at the board level, because I, I, I think I'm in agreement with Ken. I think the, the school needs to own testing, and it's testing survey results, and has to analyze those, and has to come back, in my opinion, to the education committee and say, this is what we think the survey is telling us, and this is what we think we're doing. And if the education committee says, that makes sense? I don't think there's any further discussion necessary at that point in time with the board. If we want to get to being a strategic board, we don't need to do anything more about that. If the education committee believes that the school is putting its head in the sand as it relates to that, I believe that item needs to be brought forward to the full boards so that we can have a strategic discussion about it at that point in time. If the school is handling all of these, and the, and the respective committees think they're handling all of these, I don't think the board needs to spend a lot of time on it. I think they need to hear a readout from the education committee that says, we heard the school's plan for the seven items that the education committee is responsible for, and six of them they're spout on, and one of them we think we should have a little bit more of a conversation here today. That's, that's what I think needs to be brought to the board, and the work needs to be done in the committees, that we can be a more strategic board. That's my point of view on it.
Yeah, I, I think, so, I'm, I'm sort of torn between where Pauline is and where Tom is. I think we need to get to the strategic level. I like, overall, I like number two over number one, because it gets the people who, it gets the board focused on the areas of responsibility. I have, so, but I think it's also a struggle to how to, need to find also some way to make the document itself available so that all of the board can see it. So, so it is, it is a public document, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, but that also means that it's a public document that our stakeholders can see as well, correct? So I'm going to make sure that that happens.
Including deep that?
Not, not including.
But that's the piece, that someone needs, that's, I think, the challenge, right? Someone needs to sort of screen that, the comments.
Yeah, that's where I was, that's where I was going.
The broad day that it got a public document. There needs to be some compilation.
So we need to figure out how to, if we're going to discuss the document as a board, it is now a public document. If, if someone, if the administration rolls this up, we've had this, this challenge, somebody, either an independent third party needs to roll it up and give the administration and us the same document, or we need to delegate it to the administration to filter it and give us a publicly considerable document. So I'll leave that there. And then we need to figure out some way so that all of the board can be informed of the content, whether it's done primarily in education and governance or distributed. I think they both work.
I mean, I was kind of joking when I first talked about it with Ken. I mean, the bottom line is, like, we're a school, so everything should be in the education. And, I mean, I think it's very important to spread the workload. And I think every single one of the board members could be on almost every single committee. So I don't think it really matters. I think it's just, it really matters of spreading the workload, because I do think we need to be strategic about the whole process. That's just my two cents.
Can I just suggest that we just sort of scan ourselves, whether we are more with one or two, and then we can facilitate sit around convincing ourselves when we're already convinced.
Yeah, we can do that. Well, I think I'm hearing that split. Chris, you had your. You did?
I did, but I changed my mind.
Oh, okay. Mike?
So.
I'm being strategic.
So what is the school's plan to review? What's happening from the administration's standpoint?
My, my plan would be to review it, and then if the next board, we would be able to give some kind of feedback as to what we think is, some kind of interpretation.
I wonder if, as you review it, if you come back and say, we reviewed, and from an administration's standpoint of these eight categories, these are the four that caught our attention the most, and then maybe that's, we have a hyper, is an expectation that the board will dig deep into those four so that we can have a, you know, I, I for one, I think the colleagues here, well, everyone's going to want to look at these results, but if I know that there are a couple of these that caught your attention more than others, and that you intend to talk about that, then I'll know that I'll be hyper-focused on those areas in the, in the meeting. So that might be another way.
So if I could just play devil's advocate for a moment, the only challenge with that is that, is not that, we got, we received feedback before that we were not necessarily paying attention to signals that were in surveys earlier, because we weren't looking into them closely ourselves.
Doesn't matter what you, what the administration.
So that's why it is important, I think, somehow or another, for the board to actually take a pass at actually reviewing the results unfiltered. So that we can comment then on the interpretation of the administration.
But we face the risk that, and when you say unfiltered, and it's a public document, that means that everybody sees it.
That's the reason why you don't want to.
That's why, that's why you could have an independent third party filter for us and give us something we can read and analyze and share.
But it's already been filtered. That's, we hired, we went to, we have a third party.
But the comments aren't filtered.
Right, but it hasn't, I believe it's designed so that it's not traceable to individuals. Am I correct about that?
No, it's not traceable to individuals, but I think that people still bring up names. They, they, you know, comments may have, you know, someone's got to sanitize that.
So can the third, can the part, the company sanitize it for us?
If the company can't, why can't one board member sit with the school and redact the document of any, you know, any personal names in it, and then just distribute the whole darn thing?
So I, I don't have any issue with that, as long as, I just want to make sure when the faculty filled out the survey, and I don't know what notice they received, was, there wasn't an assumption that open comments would eventually be made public? Because, you know, they, they may say something that's questionable, and they don't want it necessarily to be publicly seen.
I don't believe we commented on that at all. What we did say was that information would not be traceable to individuals.
What was the expectation, though, we're talking about?
Well, that's, that's the expectation.
Go back and look, right?
We didn't say any of our confidentiality, we said that information will not be attributable to individuals.
So then I think if we go through, if somebody goes through the redaction process, that's fine, it's just a lot to go through, but it could be done.
So the way I look at this, I have two responsibilities as an individual board member here. One is a duty of care responsibility to take a look at the entire results, albeit redacted, perhaps, or personal information, to look at the entire results, so that I'm fully informed of what is on there. And then I have, as a member of the education committee, an oversight responsibility to hear out what the administration says that they're going to do about those things relating to education, and make judgments on that, and say, yeah, makes sense, makes sense, makes sense, hey, what about this? Here's a gap, or whatever, you know, and that. So I, you know, as I said, I, I see this as sort of, obviously very related, but two separate mechanisms.
I think that's a very helpful way of, yeah.
That is helpful. So it sounds like we are getting to the point of saying, okay, there, it is hard to distribute the work on this. The piece of the work that we want to distribute is to ensure that everyone on the board actually consumes the data and, and registers and processes it. But the work of doing that filtering task probably needs to be done by a smaller portion of the board.
Well, so I, I'll just say this, though, I, I don't know if it's actually realistic to assume every board member is going to go through all hundred questions and all we, I mean, if folks are willing to, I, I, that's great. I haven't actually done it, but it's, it's quite tiny to me.
Could you break it up? Could we focus?
I don't want it, I don't want it broken up.
No, can I, Ken, one second. I'm just asking whether or not the, we cover all of it, but can we break, can we do the first five topics in the next board meeting, the next five topics in the next board meeting? If the issue is volume, is there a way that, that we can do that over two meetings?
That's practical.
I think that would, that, that would depend on whether there were issues to bring up. We might look at the results and say, everything is good, there's one issue here that we're going to discuss at a meeting, and the rest of it.
Well, we started by getting a reading, but we do it over two.
I'm addressing the volume issue. There was a, there was a question on the table about the volume, the reconcile of the volume now, it's up to go through. And so I just asked on a practical standpoint, could it make it easier?
Right, did it take two hours? Did it take 20 hours? How many hours did it take you to read it?
I, I think it's a good three, four hours, if you're going to look at it careful.
If everybody looked at all of the results.
Yeah, and you try to correlate stuff and make sense of it.
Then I think we break it into two pieces.
Someone's got to do. So then there's going to be a filtering task, and then, so there's two separate tasks, right? There's a filtering task.
So, I, I actually, I just want to clarify, maybe the filtering task could be as simple as we talk to Panorama, and they can just make sure redaction is appropriately applied, if they have the capability to do that or whatever. And, or we can kind of go through it, and we just say, can you edit stuff in there so it's redacted effectively? And that's it? That's, that's the quote-unquote filtering task. And then after that, everybody has access to materials.
Sounds like it works. I'm seeing a lot of nodding.
The only thought that I have relative to the redaction, there's names, so that's sort of an easy one, but as you go through that data, there's also reference to titles.
Yeah, I think it would be a combination.
And also, sometimes it's situational, so like, you're like, you know, last year, my, you know, kid was in a car, an incident in the parking lot, and it wasn't handled well, and they've met up. But you, you, there's only three kids that that could be, you don't understand? Like, sometimes that is really, it's tricky, I think.
So, I'll suggest this, maybe myself and somebody else, if they're willing to participate, we can make quick passes through the open comments, or the free, whatever, the full text comments, comment, figure out which ones are in question, talk to Panorama, ask them to redact accordingly, and, and we'll use best judgment, based on, good criteria, common sense criteria. And that, I'll take care of that, and then we make the surveys available to everybody. We'll take, basically just cut it in half. I would suggest, you know, take the first, whatever, five categories, have them reviewed by next board meeting, and then the following five by the following board meeting. And the assumption is, everybody's going to be reviewing the Likert-type questions, the fill-in-the-dot questions, as well as half of the reform questions.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with reviewing it, I want to come back to what are we doing at the board meeting? And are we handling this at the committee level, or are we handling this at the board level?
So the previous assumption was, and we can address that, the previous assumption was Dr. McCleary would do a readout of the survey results at half the board meeting.
So he would do the first five, and say, address things that, that he thought we were doing, and then we as a board will be informed as to whether we.
Yep. Then this page is academic discussion, I think.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, this is, it drove us to come to this.
Well, we'll, exactly. So I think we give it a try.
So what about Ken? Ken, do you want to join with your colleague Rick and go through it?
That's too much information. So again, in my mind, you know, I, I'm going to take a look at the results, and I have a role as an individual trustee, and then also on education committee. So I am probably going to be, you know, wearing two different hats, as I'm guessing. Ev is probably going to do the same, Ev and you are probably going to do the same thing in terms of your, the leadership of governance. Okay, you're going to be wearing two different hats. One is the individual trustee, looking at the broader picture, and then one looking at, you know, that particular area.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
So does it make sense to do this? We're going to get the report out from the administration in October. You'll have a chance to check with Panorama about, about the data structure and all that, and that's going to take some time to, to do that work. Distribute it to the board. You can also, in October, tell board members, and maybe we review in November, December. Does that make sense?
I don't want to read out, I don't think I want to read out from Dr. McCleary, and then we're having a discussion. I want to, if let the first five be prepared to hear what he has to say about the first five, or if I have a question about the first five, address that. So if that's not going to happen until November, and then we do the other five in December, I'm, you know, I'm fine with that, but they shouldn't be decoupled, I don't think.
All right, so if they need to be kept together, then the question is, which five are we reviewing? Like, I guess I, my question is, what's the timing on what?
Yeah, I, I would just say, let's keep it simple. Literally, what, whatever the first five are, we will cover those. So let me do this, offline, I'll follow up with Panorama, or work with Chris, to, to follow up with Panorama. Maybe we can get the redaction done within the next few days.
Yeah, you'll find out.
And if we can do that, then let's shoot for October to have all, by October, all of us will have reviewed, and Dr. McCleary can do his readout for the first five items.
Repentance for one last.
Redaction test.
One last thing, so, let's see, I like to plan, the, that assumes that all 10 categories are the same amount.
Oh, yeah.
So the only thing I would say to that.
They're similar.
I quickly scanned it.
Then I would just cut it in half.
And the answer is yes.
All right, I'd just cut it in half.
And I just want to show, I'm clarifying one thing, we're going to get the entire report, but in terms of at the meeting, we're going to look at five, and then five.
Correct.
Great.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a.
That sounds like we have a thing.
So folks will get an email to see if we can get the October date.
Are you prepared to discuss the survey results at the October meeting, or do you need more time?
I think I could be prepared to have some discussion.
Is there, is there a benefit to delaying it a month in terms of more time, more preparation, more quality? Is there a reason why we should try to do it sooner? I, I guess I'm wondering, is there a reason to drive for October, or is there a reason maybe to, to drive towards November?
I want to do, and we have a substantive discussion. So that requires homework on our part, and that requires homework on the school's part. I think as soon as we can get these things, you know, not the day before, I think the board can be ready, and I'm asking the school when they're going to be ready. And if the response is June of next year, we'll probably have a discussion about that, but if, you know, the answer is, it'd be better in November, I think we've got a position of running all of us, so we don't have to wait until November.
I'm sort of the same, thinking the same thing, I'd rather.
When, presumably, we are going to use what we get out of this survey to help us create a spring survey, so when will we need to be having that done? You know, if we have November and December, will, will we then have enough time to take what we get out of it to turn around and put into?
Yes.
I think we will, because we're not creating a new survey, we're just going to either with criminal, we, we have everything in here now, we're going to take some out. It's not like we're writing questions or anything like that.
So without that delaying, I don't think.
I asked the question at the last meeting, whether or not, for me, I feel like the survey, if you take the survey at the end of one year, and then you have the next year that you're starting to action plan on, I think, my feeling last meeting was, I would take the survey as close to the action planning as possible, so, you know, you take it.
I, I do think that we're off this journey just because we're trying to.
Right, so I, so is it on the table for a future discussion about whether or not the survey will be done in next spring or next?
Yes, actually, folks, all right, I shouldn't have said that. That was, that's something that we have talked about, looking at the board calendar overall, and figuring out the timing of that.
I'd love to have that discussion.
Yeah, that's what I'm discussing. I mean, I would prefer, so I'm looking at it just in terms of what we have to accomplish in the October board meeting, because the October board meeting is when we have the auditors here, so we have half an hour to go through the financials. We also have to do our self-assessment, that's going to be a backbone of our track to do that, you know, before. So we have a full October meeting already.
Let's do it in November.
Yeah, let's do it in November and December.
And if I could just make one comment, just you mentioned about April, I think, so.
You just said spring, but yeah, it's spring.
Spring. So I think we, we had some discussion offline, a few of us, and I think that the thought is to have a, a, one survey, faculty survey, a full-blown one, hopefully not these many questions, but a full-blown one once a year, and potentially have a check-in some months after that, whatever, to just sanity check everything all day with a fewer number of questions. So that's just directionally the plan. Isn't that fine?
So if we talk about that December, when we fix up all our results, like, when, does it make sense?
When and what should we come up with?
I think that would work, because it also flows into the general reading as well.
Yeah.
I mean, it's practical, but you know, at least as we're talking about work for due recognition. All right, Tom. Finance and audit topic.
Okay. We'll very briefly talk about August, and then we will revisit the year-to-date budget, and we can talk about that. So from an August perspective, we're looking at the cell right here versus the budget, this is our tuition, right in line with, you know, our expectations, $9,000 over grants, we didn't have any grant activity miscellaneous, this relates to interest income and things like that, very minimus there. August, a partial month of food services revenue coming in there for, you know, for the August month, and some of September flowed into there, a little bit of student program activity, very little bit of athletic program activity, and then revenue for the regional buses coming in. Total income versus the budget, right in line really with the budget is where we were from an income side. On an expense side, salaries came in substantially lower. Reason the salaries came in lower, we had teachers that were leaving in August, who were replaced by new teachers in August, timing of when the old teachers would have been paid versus when the new teachers actually were paid, is what is leading to the timing delta and the change on the salaries. Just flowing down, other big items here, instructional supplies, right in line with what our expectations were, and student programs, right in line with what our expectations were. We had some new uniforms come in, things like that there, leasing cam, right in line, facilities right in line. So, bottom line, you know, net income for the month of $130,000 is where we came in. So that, nothing too surprising there. Legal was obviously under, that was one of the big items that was under, was legal, and the salaries that were under led to the increase in the surplus for the month of August.
So what's the deviation in professional development?
Professional development is very hard to, to predict what, you know, what it's going to be.
Which is very bumpy.
Yeah, and it's, you're, so you're looking at 100% deviation on a $5,000 number is what you're looking at there. So while the percent deviation is, is pretty high, the absolute dollars is $5,000 deviation.
I think it's a bunch of straight lines.
Yeah.
Over 12 months, but obviously.
So that's the month of August. So now normally, we vote on a budget in the spring, which we did, and approved the budget in the spring. We are going to reapprove our budget at this point in time, because we've had some reasonably substantial changes in assumptions from when we put the budget together. The first relates to regional busing, and you're going to see this show up in two places. So this is the revenue side of regional busing, substantially down from what we were projecting. The reason it's substantially down is, instead of having four regional buses, we only have two regional buses, okay? So you take that, you're going to have less revenue. You come down here to the expense side for student transportation. Student transportation includes things other than just the regional buses, but what you're going to see is, you're going to see a substantial decrease in student transportation down here. We went from paying for, four buses to paying for two buses. So we just want to acknowledge that change there. The other change that's out there is the change in salaries. So when we put the budget together, we had not reached a contract with our teachers at that point in time. There was a 0% increase in the budget when we voted on it for increases in teacher salary. We arrived at a contract, it reflects a 2% salary increase, an additional $75,000 to go to various individuals as per the contract, that flows through to this number, so you're seeing that number go up there. The next line down is the fringe line, payroll taxes in fringe, that flows directly from salary number and some other changes that were in the budget related to days off and things like that, that flows through the fringe number. So you're seeing a variance there. And then finally, down here, under lease payments, facilities, under facilities, our lease payments did not change. What did change was our traffic situation. And so we have had to have additional assistance in form of lease out there directing traffic, which has a cost associated with it of $20,000. Our hope is that we're going to taper that off as we, near the end of this month, and that's what we're projecting the delta to be there. So those are three substantial changes, the regional busing, the ratification of the teacher contract, and the transportation, the traffic situation that have an impact here. The bottom line impact of all of this, we go from a projected surplus of approximately a quarter of a million dollars to a projected surplus of approximately $100,000, is what we're looking at here. Again, you think about the entire organization in total, the budget's a $13 million organization, we're projecting a surplus of less than 1% at this point in time. We're basically projecting a surplus of approximately 2%. Now we're projecting a surplus of, you know, less than 1%. We're still projecting a surplus. So I would entertain questions about any of these changes. of these changes before we approve the revised budget and move on.
Any questions? The police officer costs twenty thousand dollars?
Over the year? No.
No.
The police officer costs twenty thousand dollars over the August and September time period. You do not pay for the police officer who's standing out there for a single hour. You pay for the police officer for an hour for the police officer to get here, the hour that the police officer's here, another hour on the back end. We're paying for two of them, and they are not cheap. So welcome to the state of Massachusetts.
So I'm confused.
I would have done it for one thousand.
People wouldn't have moved to.
We haven't got.
They move when you have a light, a flashing blue light with a, you know, squad car.
And also because the mayor of Marlborough said she happens to do it, so, you know, I would have been.
You got a question, Roger?
Yeah, so I see that there's a twenty K difference in the facilities area. Is that, that's for the, that's.
That's the incremental for the police officer.
But you were saying that was the cost for one month.
That's, that is the total annual projected, you know, difference.
Of people expecting it August.
If, if we were thinking that it was going to be, you know, ten thousand dollars a month, we would have been projecting a hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, yeah.
We are projecting that we've got people acclimated to the new traffic patterns, only making right turns. Same seemed to be working right. We're going to be able to diminish the police officer presence. We will probably bring them back once a month, just keep people honest and, you know, in tune with traffic patterns. So we're projecting a total additional cost.
Total additional cost of twenty K for police officers over the year.
Yep.
Got it. Of which we spent most of that during this month.
We have spent most of that because we know.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you.
Any other questions on changes to the budget?
So Tom, are you proposing that we, what we revise is not just the yellow, but actually what the forecast column is, is that the new budget? Because it's the yellow plus the benefits.
Yes. I'm sorry, did I not highlight?
Yeah, the benefits are not. Oh, it's not on.
There was an update, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, so we are.
Just the yellow.
Yes, the yellow is what, you know, is what we are, you know, we are reforecasting at this point in time. The bottom line is whether we reapprove this budget, you know, I mean, we can reapprove this budget now. We can not approve this budget now and say we want the school to go back and find, you know, additional money to create an additional surplus or something like that. My recommendation is we acknowledge these changes, and then we start mapping against the revised forecast is what, is what we can do.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this budget, Steve.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? No, you weren't supposed to. All right, you're all set. I think you're passing.
So you've already mentioned it, next month, exciting meeting next month. The auditors will be here to present the results of our financial statement audit. Don't want, don't want to miss out on, you know, on the fun there. Also.
Actually, the audit is a lot of fun, because, because the very interesting part is they come and give us a lot of benchmarks against how other charter schools are doing on the finances, and that's really elucidating.
Why don't we just see the document?
What document?
Will we have it before they come?
You will have it, you will have it before they come. They're not wrapping it up, they're not wrapping it up until about two days to finish their audit, about two days before our meeting. So you're not going to get it weeks ahead of time, but you will get it ahead of time. So don't want to miss out, folks. Tell your friends. Okay.
Governance.
We have two items to actually vote on out of governance.
Tell me which one you want to pull up.
Expulsion policy.
While you're pulling that up, I just want to make a note that we actually heard back from DCE today, ninety days practically after we submitted our bylaws change, and they, they are provisionally approved with all the changes that we made, but ask for a couple of minor wording changes throughout to comply with their, you know, make sure that the wording is exactly what they want. Apparently now they're called the Board of Education, so we have to change the, the Board of, Department of, and, you know, things like duty of loyalty and duty of care have to be explicitly stated as opposed to what we have, which is something like duty of loyalty and care.
Well, there's a Board of Education, there's a Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, two different things.
Okay, so there are just different things where they, where we changed it. But these are our bylaws that we have to change, too, though, to change. So there's, some of these are, like, our complaint policy is straight out of their language, and yet there are still changes that were, they requested done. So it's going to be reviewed through governance in October. But there's no substantive change of the wording.
So we've got two items here. The first one being is expulsion policy, and we need, Sarah has been really sort of helping us and driving this quite a bit here. This is actually a new policy. There is a reference in the current handbook or the prior handbook which really sort of defines what expulsion is, but DCE is now requiring an actual policy. This is, and hopefully everybody's had a chance to read it. Sarah sent it out by attachments on email. I actually attached it to Board on Track. First time I've attached anything to Board on Track, so, in that system. And then there's also, I think, a hard copy, so in the package here. So what's listed here, and this is very similar to like a bullying policy or enrollment policy, so it's a separate policy now. It is included in the handbook. What's listed up on the screen here is really the checklist for the expulsion policy which comes from DCE, and these are the elements which have to be in the policy. So our policy now, as written, what's in the handbook, has gotten provisional approval from DCE, and final approval will come after we, as a board, vote on the policy. And thank, in general, that's probably about it, sort of a high level. So these are the elements, we have the policy, it's in the handbook, and we now need to vote on it.
And it mirrors the Massachusetts general laws as well as the Code of Massachusetts regulations, so it's just quite.
Yes.
In line.
Yes.
What the rule of law is.
Yes, and DCE has already approved preliminary, our version of the policy.
Is there anything, can you highlight for us, anything here that differs from the?
I can give you kind of the context. After the, the historical context, after the violence that occurred in Columbine, the schools across the country tended to move toward a very strict, what they call a zero tolerance policy for lots of things, and that meant, you know, clamping down and expelling. And so in the, how many years since then, I don't know, fifteen, twenty, I don't know how long ago.
Fifteen, I think.
Since then, there's been a kind of a, as is usually the case in these kinds of things, you know, the pendulum goes one way and then the pendulum goes back. So the reaction has been, well, let's limit the sort of things that people would get expelled for. And so recently, like, two, two years ago, I believe, one year and a half ago, there was a new law added to the Massachusetts law saying that students would be expelled for a limited number of things. Assault on a staff member, possession of a dangerous, of a weapon, a gun, or something, a knife, something like that, possession of a controlled substance. Very, very, they narrowed it down, so they wanted to really clearly define it and make it much narrower. In lieu of any of those instances, or in the absence of any of those instances, then the results should be, the repercussions should be something short of expulsion, like suspension for a period of time, maybe an outplacement to be evaluated at some medical facility, and then given a documentation that says you're okay to come back, that sort of thing. So that was sort of a thrust.
Uh huh.
And so as a result, they've sent this out to all the schools, you want to make your expulsion policy tighter.
It also allows to make sure that there are provisions for continuing services, which is.
That's right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the expulsion policy.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
The second item we have is the handbook itself, two thousand fifteen, sixteen. And again, this is one that was sent out by email as well as attached to Board on Track. And what you have up here are really the, and again, this is very much to Sarah's help of going through the handbook, and major changes, minor changes. My understanding is that actually a reporter was asked to go through the handbook previously and identify those areas that needed to be changed. Subsequently from that, Mrs. O'Connor, Dr. Curry, and Dr. McCleary have also all gone through the handbook and made revisions and edits as appropriate. And so the biggest changes, as you see, number one on the bottom there, of course, the expulsion policy we just talked about. Instead of going from bottom to top, there's a sort of a new respect and responsibility code that is also different from prior years. Dr. McCleary, you want to comment?
It kind of, it builds on the effort grade that we had on the report card in the past. Basically incorporates that with the character development component. It's something that we put in the accountability plan going forward to, at the, frankly, the DCE approved of this element to have a character building component in the accountability plan. And we're having a professional development coming up, where we're going to be having the faculty flesh this out and give their input about what they would like to see in terms of encouraging the student body to develop along in those areas. So that's, that's why it says rubric to be added, but we wanted to make sure it was in the handbook that it's part of that, what we're paying attention to in terms of the student development. And it'd be given, as just as in the past, they're being given a effort grade. It doesn't go in their transcript. It's, it's a way of paying attention to it and giving the students and the parents feedback about how they're doing in these areas that are not strictly academic grade attainment, but character development, effort, behavior, improvement in responsibility, that sort of thing. So that's, that's why that's included in the handbook, kind of built on what we had before.
Thank you. And of course, under major changes or things such as we've had changes in our administration, our leadership, so the personnel changes, updated calendar, and then down below, other minor changes that have actually taken place. And you see in red there those changes are.
I could pass the question, Dr. McCleary, because I know that, I don't have the full handbook obviously here, and I don't remember the exact part of the handbook, although I probably should. With regard to the excused absences, was there a defined list of what they were for, like religious observance, medical? What counted college interview? What was attributable to an excused absence?
I don't know.
Okay.
I think there is, honestly.
Yeah, there was, yeah. And I know there was not a lot of changes done, but I just, that was one. And then the other one, the next one with regard to providing documentation if you have a driver. So if the individual drives to school and they come with a documented excuse for dismissal, let's say a doctor's appointment, and then they bring that to the front office or submit it where it needs to be submitted, then there needs to also be a follow-up phone call to make sure that that actually came from the parent. Is that the purpose behind it?
Yeah, again, I wasn't the person who, I delegated this to someone else, so I could probably get the answer.
Just a little bit more clarification.
No, I looked at that pretty carefully because I looked at it today before we came. I think the written documentation when they come, that's, that's the medical excuses most, that, that the driver can use, that the follow-up is for dismissal.
Yes, but it looks like what they're saying is, if you come and, let's say, you have a doctor's appointment, and you write your, you know, my daughter has a doctor's appointment, she's going to, leaving school today, whatever, one o'clock. And then it seems like it's a two-step verification process. Then they have to call you, and if you're not available, then your child's not going to be able to leave, if your child's a driver, to go ahead and go to the appointment. Whereas if you're in a meeting and you missed the phone call. I'm just trying to get a little bit more clarity on that.
Oh, I see. I see. I think they just need independent verification. And I have this issue, too, with someone having that, with the parent's friends.
Yeah, and somebody would notice, okay, I'm just trying, the phone calls, whatever.
Email. Rather than sending in a note with the student who can.
Oh, so then just send it out.
Yeah, I mean, that, exactly, that was the idea. There needs to be parental verification of dismissal. They can't stop this next day.
Just want to make sure.
But I think all the others, I got one comment back, which is a question about weapons, because it's both in suspension and expulsion, so what is the priority that is shown up in this case?
Say it again, Paul, what was the question?
Weapon shows up both in suspension and.
Sophie, and because of the weapon may be.
Well, well, I guess because.
Or maybe.
Yeah, the reasoning there, I think, is that it's up to the discretion of the administration, you know. For example, one that comes to mind, when I was teaching elementary school, a boy had a knife. He was also a Sikh. And Sikh young men are required to carry a knife if they're baptized Sikh. So I asked him, why do you have this penknife? And he said, because I'm a Sikh and I'm a Baptist. And I said, okay, fine, just keep it in your pocket and don't take it out, you know. So, you know, obviously, he wasn't trying to hurt anybody with it. It was part of his religion, and his father confirmed that, and I said, all right, that's fine. You know, it wasn't a big knife like this, it was a little penknife or something. I think there's room there for latitude. You don't want to just automatically expel somebody because they have what, you know, what might be technically a weapon. Has to be, you know, the circumstances always matter, in my experience.
Okay.
I went looking for the freedom of expression one, and I just wanted to note that, it says it's on page thirty-eight. That is actually on page forty. I don't know if that matters to anybody, but. Under minor changes, it says words add to freedom of expression, page thirty-eight. That's actually on page forty.
Well, this was just for us. The actual document.
I don't know if it should have changed, I think, since we've.
Yeah.
So that's what I think happened, Jess. It might have changed. The page numbers, the pagination changed, and you can sort of revise, make the governance, I think it's going to change a little bit, the pagination.
I think you're right.
So this is not, this is not what we're voting on. We're voting on the policy.
This is just a summary without going into policy.
We, in governance, we have reviewed it and have requested, made the request for Sarah volunteer, requested to summarize the changes because the whole policy is.
Extensive.
Intensive. So it was really great to be able to see this.
It was wonderful.
I think if we were doing the whole policy, it's around sixty-five pages.
I can pull it up if you'd like.
Hopefully we don't have to. Okay. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion, that's our question. I'd like to make a motion to approve the handbook.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
Good job, everyone.
Thank you.
Any other update?
We have a number of policies that we're continuing to be a work in process. We're getting a little bit further, a little bit more engagement with Board on Track, utilizing them as sort of a knowledge resource, since they had a good discussion in governance relative to some of the information that they had, that, especially around internal, external communications and documents that they provided. So that will carry over to our next meeting. So I think in general, that's probably about it.
So we had our kickoff meeting on September seventeenth, and thank all the participants in that, because we had it originally scheduled for six o'clock, and then when we realized it was parent night, then we moved it to the start time up to four-thirty, and had very good attendance, including Dr. McCleary and Dr. Curry, who joined us for that. So we talked generally about the mission and guiding principles, which you all have seen copies of, talked about the accountability plan, tried to do a discussion of sort of the exercise I'd gone through in terms of taking a look at academic success, or academic excellence as we call it, and faithfulness to the charter, and how that flows down from the Mass General Law and the Code of Massachusetts Regulations, and, and, you know, there are anchors for that. So, you know, this isn't just stuff that's obviously getting, you know, pulled from nowhere. There are specific laws and regulations that are, that lead to us having to do an accountability plan that is associated with our charter or re-charter. plan that is associated with our charter or rechartering. Dr. McCleary talked a little bit about what he had gone through to, to do that. I talked about the requirement for the annual plan, excuse me, annual report, and how that is our report out of our progress on our accountability plan. Talked a little bit about what academic success is, talked about, a little bit about faithfulness to the charter. And so in terms of sort of upcoming things, we're going to then start to take a look at our charter, and not only the charter, but the summary review document that was what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education gave to us as part of our rechartering, which was their review. And they talked about academic excellence, talked about faithfulness to the charter and so forth. A second thing that we're going to be doing is, we have started to list sort of strategic priorities. One of the things I said to the committee as a whole was, we have eight meetings, okay? So it sounds like we have an entire year, okay? But we have eight meetings, and so what are we going to do with that, you know, 12 to 16 hours of time that we have together? And so what are the strategic priorities that tell us what we will do and what we're going to set aside? So we started developing that list, and that was part of our next actions that we're going to do. And I say that because obviously, if any other board member has, you know, some thoughts in terms of what the education committee's strategic priorities ought to be over these next eight meetings, then certainly I'd be interested to, to hear about that. And then the last thing is that in taking a look at the charter and the summary review, you know, Dr. McCleary has some ideas about the direction he wants to see the curriculum going, and so having him meeting with the committee and talking with the committee about his own thoughts gives us an opportunity to sort of see what directions faithfulness to the charter and academic excellence are going in his mind, so we can sort of do that, due diligence and oversight. Part of this, I think, will be, one of the things that the education committee is supposed to be doing, is board education, so maybe some short discussions on, regarding student academic success. How do we, how do we plan for that? How do we measure our progress towards that and so forth? And so we're meeting once a month, our next meeting is going to be October 22nd. We had the entire committee there, with the exception of a couple of, Jess wasn't able to make it, but it was parent night, so it's certainly understandable. Had another parent was not able to make it, but we had really good attendance, and we had a couple of guests beyond that, so that was really good. I think the membership is going to, as people sort of understand what's going to be involved with being on the education committee, that there's going to be some studying and deliberations involved in that, then we may have some flux in the membership if we go forward. So I think that's what I had for a monthly update.
Okay, great. Our, the final, final, final result of the, I had no given campaigns, in excess of $39,000. So I want to say thank you to everybody again. I think that we came in, about 90% of what we did the year before, given both the fact that we shifted the campaign from the fall to the spring, and all the turmoil on the environment, speaks volumes about the generosity and commitment of our donors. And I also want to thank this board, who gave 100% in substantial amounts, and I think is largely responsible for our success in that campaign. And I want to thank Sharon Hall, as she said. There have been some changes in the committee. Scott has stepped down. Scott, we're going to miss you. Scott has stepped up. So, I'm sorry, Roger has stepped down and Scott has stepped up.
He thought he just got fired.
So I want to welcome, welcome Scott and I to the committee. Also, from the, from the staff, Kathy McLaughlin from the administrative staff, and Matt Skelly, who's a faculty member and a former development professional, has joined the committee. And I want to give a special shout-out to Maureen Evans, who recruited them. We have set our meeting schedule for the year, we are beginning, begin meeting beginning in November, and sometime between then, Dr. McCleary and I are trying to get a meeting together to make sure that we're acting in alignment. That's it.
I will take agenda requests for the next meeting. Anything above and beyond are to be debated.
Actually, I have a quick question. So our bylaws were, bylaws changes were provisionally approved? Which means that telephonic participation was provisionally approved?
Well, that's actually a question to be set up.
I would say it's provisionally approved, but are we going to go there until it's actually approved?
No, I don't think we're going to go there until it's actually approved. But I guess my question would be, if the school explore, what, what is anything we need to do to be able to make that happen, if we, if we wanted to get to that point? So I...
Yeah, because we'll get to that point in October when we vote on them, so.
So the school could look at what, you know, what is anything, if we need to conduct this in a different room, if we can get dial-in line in here and things like that. Sorry, Paul.
Yeah, we're almost there. I can't wait, it's been a lot, it's actually been a year. But we're almost there. Almost in time to review bylaws again. All right. So do any other agenda requests specifically?
Not for October, to November, they're not...
All right.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Second. The chair must state that discussing the pending litigation in open session would be directed to our...
You have to say it.
Yes. Yes, for this category.
For this category, also, are, I think, if we believe that pending litigation is definitely a specific concession. Mike's second?
Yes.
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 So Polly, does it need writing? Yeah, usually we enjoy that.